You walk. Then they cross each other. The guy that's helping me with this, he's the one who started the team. Mark.
This is our session. Roseanne Ward, Chair.
Hi, may I let us pray, please? Dear Lord, our heavenly Father, we're coming tonight to conduct our family visits. We pray that you'll keep us united and help us to make the decisions for the benefit of our county. And we ask you, Lord, to be with our commissioners and their families tonight and come off strong. We pray that you protect our men and women in the military. And we ask for you to help us it. And, Lord, we ask for you to touch the lives of anyone that is through the going through a hard time right now. We pray to be more like you, Lord. We pray to be alive in a dark place. We ask you, Lord, to forgive us of our sins. And we pray this in your name. Amen. Rocky Preston.
I've been asked to lead this pledge, everybody. I'm gonna do it a little different. I'm gonna say, attention, salute, pledge. Attention. Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, President. For some of our local partners, we're late now. Commissioner, there will be a fact. It's been a little windy weather, so we'd like to be back with us. And we'd also like to take about a couple of our commissioners who have lost loved ones.
To know that we're deeply sorry and that we have you in our thoughts and prayers. Roll call, please.
Gary Farr. Jerry Cross. Jerry King. So, you can present one action group.
Okay, we didn't have a forum. Next is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Nunry. All in favor, say aye. Do we have any opposed? All ayes, carry. Okay. That's okay.
Deborah. Is Deborah? No, she's in my place, she not in here. I'll call. And Duane. So, thank you all.
Okay, the agenda is approved. Next is the citizens forum. Would someone, please hand me the sheet, please, with citizen. Pardon me? Thank you. You were quick. Donna Vick. Donna's with the Second Harvest Food Bank.
Good evening, I am Donna Vick. I reside in the second district. And I am the donor relations manager at Second Harvest Food Bank at the Ray Smith Family Distribution Center, located in our Benton County Industrial Park. Our mission is to provide food to people facing hunger and work to advance hunger solutions. Ten years ago, September 2013, the Benton County Commission donated 23 acres to the Benton County, from the Benton County Commission, from the Benton County Industrial Site, the Second Harvest Food Bank. And again, I want to say thank you. That was a priceless gift that we greatly appreciate. Since then, Second Harvest has raised awareness and funds to construct and open the Ray Smith Family Distribution Center. And we have, for the past four years, since we opened in November of 2018, many of our neighbors facing hunger have received food. They're second harvested by our local partner agencies or our feeding programs. In Benton County, our partner agencies are the Benton County Minister Alliance, New Beginnings Ministry, Big Sandy CCOC, Camden First United Methodist Church, and Missionary Grove Baptist Church. Some of our local feeding programs are the Benton County Backpack Program and the Benton County School Food Pantry, distributed through Donna Moore with the school, the school health coordinator. And summer feeding programs served at the Benton County Library. I have a brochure for you. If you'll pass on the money, I would greatly appreciate it. In this, it's, uh, our brochure, our annual report from 2020, 2021. It highlights the impact of COVID on food insecurity. Our newest brochure comes out in about three weeks. And it will also show in that brochure from 2022 that in Benton County alone, we serve over 400,000 meals with the help of our partner agencies. In the role of donor relations manager, my job is to ask for three things. Your time, your talents, and your treasures. Tonight, I'm not asking for your talent, that's a food drive. I am not asking for your treasures. Tonight, I am asking you for your time. Come volunteer. Uh, looking around, only a few of you I've ever seen in our facility. One objective of the Camden facility is to offer community engagement opportunities, which is hands-on experiences which directly impact those facing food insecurity. Camores and OxyChem come once a quarter. PML, Dana, ATA, TEC, Maddox Insurance, Grangus, and Baptist Memorial Healthcare have all driven to Camden to volunteer in the last four years. Banks like Carroll Bank and Trust, Centennial Bank, Apex Bank, Cedar County Bank, and TBA, New Johnsonville Employees Credit Union, have all volunteered several times. Students and educators and school groups from Henry County High School, Benton County High School, Henry County and Benton County FFA, Beta Clubs, Leo Clubs, collegiate athletic teams, have all come and volunteered. Churches like United Way, Maplewood Baptist for Baptist use, Dresden First United Methodist for Dawson Memorial UMC in Dover, Mylan First Baptist, have all come and volunteered. As well as faithful individuals from Benton Counties and surrounding counties who've come on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays since we opened four years ago. Come volunteer. I'm asking you in 2023 to consider coming over to volunteer. Tell me what day and time. Monday through Saturday, morning, afternoon, or evening. Two and a half hours. Team-building experience for you and opportunity to see a state-of-the-art facility that's in your community. I am just asking you to come to the Ray Smith Family Distribution Center in 2023 as a group and volunteer. My card is on your brochure, my phone number, my email. You can't make it as a group, bring your family. If you work for a company, bring them over. Your students, bring them over. Uh, our very own Benton County and Caitlin Arnold Spivey is actually on our bigger Benton, our Second Harvest Food Bank in Middle Tennessee Board. She's more than welcome to help you. She represents our counties in West Tennessee. I'm just asking tonight, if you'll make the decision to come volunteer in 2023. That's it. Yes.
Donna, how many do you need there on the same day to work?
Uh, our shifts are two and a half hours. We'll take up to 30 people. 25 is a good time, a good number. Uh, it really depends on our product. But there are weeks, we have five shifts, there are weeks. We have just our three to four. Uh, one day, we had Baptist Memorial Healthcare that brought their crew three times in a day. Two and a half hours each.
Well, if we wanted as a group of commissioners to come out on one of those days, who would we contact to set that up?
If you'll contact me on the card, I'll hook you up and get you started.
Okay. Maybe we could do that. I think that would be a good idea.
Thank you.
What days do you have a lot of stuff?
A lot of stuff to pick up. Well, you know what? I have something for you. You can make boxes. Very easy.
Thank you, Donna. Lori Matlock from the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, Lori Matlock is your Director of the Benton County Camden Chamber of Commerce. And this afternoon, I'm also here to ask for just a little bit of your time. I would like to invite you to our, um, second Chamber Coffee. And some of you may ask, what is a Chamber Coffee? Chamber Coffee is a networking event. It's a chance to meet, um, people and business owners in our community. This month, our Chamber Coffee is hosted by the Benton County Board of Education, our Benton County School System. We're combining our Chamber Coffee with a ribbon cutting to, um, show off the new administrative offices at the Board of Education. So I've got some invites for you guys. I'd love to pass these out if you don't mind. Just pass them around. This event is on Wednesday, January the 25th. The, uh, Chamber Coffee begins at nine and then the ribbon cutting will be at 10:30. This is a great opportunity for our commissioners to mingle and visit with our business owners, especially our new business owners in the community, just to get out there and get to know them and support the Board of Education and the Chamber of Commerce. And I would appreciate it. And if anyone has any questions, just please feel free to let me know. At the Chamber office, you can email me. Um, this information is on Facebook, but I wanted to extend a personal invitation to you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next is the Commissioners Forum. Do we have a commissioner that would like to speak?
Well, I would like to bring up about the bottle that we had over Christmas with electricity going off and all the water line breaks. And I, I, I thank the electric system and the water department for doing all that they could to get us up and going. So many people have water line breaks, Big Sandy, a lot of Big Sandy. Didn't have water for two or three days. When it did come back on, there were several days that it was unusable because it was brown and nasty. People couldn't take baths or cook for nearly a week after all that. And it just makes me wonder if just that cold snap with such a power grid strain on our electric, what's this going to do when they want us to charge all these electric vehicles with electric chargers? I just don't see that happening. If they can't, uh, if the power grid can't hold up to warm our homes for just, what was it, like a week of really bad cold weather? And I don't blame the electric company. I, I just, I just don't feel like TBA should be shutting down all these coal plants. For one thing, that produces the electricity that goes to the electric company that comes to our homes. But it's not my decision. But I, I just want to say thank you. Any of y'all, or any of the plumbers are listening over Facebook for coming out over the holiday and even on the holiday to repair these water lines in the people's homes. And the water department for being out over the holidays repairing the water lines throughout the county that were busted. Uh, I can't thank them enough. I had to get them to come out to my house to fix a broken water line. And I, I was just wondering if we could, uh, consider maybe at some point in time, something maybe we could do better to, to stop this from happening again.
Anyone else? Anyone want to make any comments to that? Okay. Commissioner Price?
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, Mayor Ward, if you would, to give us that thing. Uh, we're on with our radar project down in the water. Uh, the Weather Radar? Uh, that company, I talked to them the day before yesterday, I believe. It may have been Friday. But they've got the contractors lined up to pour the concrete and get the, uh, generator and all the equipment ready. They're, they're gonna be doing the concrete, plumbing, and electric, everything they have to, to get it ready for that in February. And they gave me a timeline. I think I emailed it to you, uh, today. Uh, they should be installing everything through the month of March and have it operational by the end of March. But it's, it's looking good. There's no, no problems whatsoever.
Anyone else? Commissioner Preston?
Thank you, Chairperson. I was at the, uh, recent, last week law enforcement meeting. And there was a lot of, uh, good conversation concerning jailers, deputies, hiring resource officers. And there was conversation about two revenue studios. Many commissioners are in attendance. They were told local option sales tax was taking a downward turn. And now, I'm gonna speak on this subject. I want to talk about local option sales tax. The information that I give here to you tonight came from the Trustee's Office under, uh, account analysis in the recent release, uh, Tennessee State Comptroller's Audit for 2022 Budget. Local option sales tax is allowed by the state, the maximum rate of 2.75%. That's where Benton's county's at. We've drawn a maximum rate. 7% of your sales tax charge goes to the state, the state's at the state. 2.75% of your sales tax goes to the state and is returned to the county 12 times a year, 12 payments a year. There's a cap, $1,600. If you buy a $40,000 car, at 1,600, you quit paying local option sales tax. Your sales tax drops from 9.75 to 7%. The general assembly is having a conversation about doubling this amount. If that was the case, and must have happened, and that would, uh, be prominent in large purchase items, cars, used cars, most. A lot more is, uh, the trailer down there. State law requires that all local option sales tax, half of it, not all of it, I'm sorry, half of it is to go to the schools. Should you turn to the budget and you see the school's account, 4-0-200, local option sales tax. That dollar amount reflects local option sales tax from the city of Camden, Big Sandy, and Benton County. Pretty large numbers. Whereas when you go to the debt service or the general fund and you're looking at local option sales tax, you're only looking at donations, local option sales tax from the county. Smaller amounts of money. Now for the number. Local option sales tax in 2014. Revenue on the Benton County side, $646,703. $646,000. In 2020, it was doubled, $1.2 million. In 2019, our first year to break exceeded $1 million. Also, the first year of one month brought in over $100,000. 2020, 10 of our months received over $100,000. 2021, the revenue income grew by $1.8 million. 2022, with a first-time local option sales tax, went over $2 million. Now for 2023. Payments for the first six months, the total of $1,144,922. $57,788 in the first six months of last year. Your, uh, December payment, the last one made, over $197,000. November, still over $189,000 paid. Uh, so show me a decline. You can't. What we have is a slowdown in growth. Now for the Tennessee State Comptroller's Audit, 2022. 230-something pages, it's overwhelming what's to make. Uh, get tired of it, lay it down, pick it up the next day. All the talk we listened to back in April, May, June about we need a property tax increase. Remember that? It was blamed on the budget committee for 2022. All the talk about how we, some of us had overinflated incoming revenues. Well, here's the, here's the facts. This is what the audit shows and reveals. This year, the incoming revenues exceeded expenditures by $508,291. Incoming revenues exceeded expenditures, I'll say it again, $508,000. That means we overfunded the general fund that much money, which is a good thing. The school. Comptroller's Audit shows that we overfunded the school, the school was overfunded, some of that's state dollars. One million, $739,91. And this is a good thing. The schools in their fund balance is built for funds. Um, the, uh, local option sales tax was estimated by budget committee to come in at $2,586,000 for the school. Guess what? It come in at $3,298,000. The estimate that budget picked, $712,729 shy of what actually came in. Now, just about finished, Chairman, thank you.
You've got one minute, Rocky.
Let's not, let's not be poor mouthed. Let's don't let nobody poor mouth us into believing we can't afford resource officers. That's where I'm going with all these conversations. I feel the need to act swiftly and coordinate with the two cities, Camden and Big Sandy, with the school board or the Board of Education and fill in resource officers for all the schools. Should something bad happen, let's have done our part as commissioners. Let's get close to the most a county can do to protect our children at school. Chairman, I yield applause.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Okay, if none, we're going, we're going to move on to number four on our agenda. Uh, Mr. Melton, our county attorney, do you have anything to say?
Oh, ma'am.
Okay. We don't have any guest speakers here. So next, um, I'm turning it over to our, Mayor Ward.
I have a couple of special people in the audience that I want to recognize tonight. Uh, Hayden Peak and Bobby Flash Melton. They both, uh, received the Governor's Volunteer Stars Award. And we want them to know that we're really proud of them, uh, on the local level. And I got something I want to present them if they don't mind coming up. I, Mark Ward, Mayor of Benton County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim that we honor Hayden Peak and Bobby Flash Melton for their outstanding community leadership and congratulate them on the Governor's Volunteer Star Award.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Do you want to get a picture too?
Both of you, that one, it's kind of got your face off.
Do you want, do you want any of your family members to come up here? Or anybody that's here with you tonight for a picture or anything? Okay.
She done cut me off.
Yeah, come on.
We'll do one out there.
Ashley brought several people with her from the Missionary Grove Baptist Church tonight.
Mark, if I could get you to stand.
It's raining all day, you can have it.
There we go. Wow, that's pretty good. Yeah, one, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it. Very often.
Yep.
Flash, do you want somebody to come up here?
She's having trouble with her legs.
Okay, gotta be fine. Still want to leave her out.
That was my job. Mark, could you just get that way? Appreciate that. One more. And one last one. All right, great. Thank you. There you go. Thank you. Anybody else want to thank one?
Hey, we just think these guys so much are volunteering in what they mean to the community. So, everybody give them one applause.
Can we move on without you, Mayor? So do you have something else?
That's all I had. So y'all go right ahead.
Okay. We're going to move on to the approval of the minutes. That's number five on the agenda. I need a motion and a second. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Arnold. Um, all in favor? Are we gonna vote on this one? Okay. Okay. So all in favor, say aye. Do we have any opposed? None likewise. So we approve the minutes. Next is the report of the public utilities. We need a new motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay. Now we will start our resolutions. So I need a motion and a second for... It's okay.
Resolution number?
Okay. Now we're ready for resolution number one, which is to reappoint Ken Miller, Gary Farr, Amy Cates, and Stacy Hicks to the Benton County Agriculture Extension Committee for two-year terms. Need a motion and a second? Okay, we have one from Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Nunry. All in favor of these appointments, vote aye or yes. Do you have a, okay, so do you have to state your reason? Or do you, how'd you rather just pass?
I'll just pass.
Chairperson, could we amend the resolution and make it include that Dwayne Fowler has to finish my truck this week?
We'll, hi, we'll suspend Rose for that later.
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I don't give you a vote, nobody.
Any, okay, hold it. Did you ask for, no one changing this?
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Okay, motion passes. Resolution number two is a resolution to reappoint Daryl Hicks, Chris Purcell, and Keith Wilson to the Benton County Parks and Recreation Board. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any discussion? All in favor of voting for these people? Vote yes or no. No.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Motion carries. Number three is a resolution to budget funds in the amount of $1,500 received from the DTF to the sheriff's salary supplements. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Fowler. Any questions? Or discussion? If none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Resolution four is a resolution to budget funds in the amount of $6,598.21 within the sheriff's department budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Hall and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Do we have any questions? Okay, if none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, seventeen yes.
Resolution five is a resolution to appropriate $5,000 from the unassigned fund balance to the county buildings maintenance fund to cover repair costs in the jail. So this will be, uh, we're appropriating money, this will be two-thirds vote. We have a motion by Commissioner Hicks and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Any questions? Recommended by Property Committee? No questions? Okay, everyone vote please.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Resolution six is a resolution to appropriate $10,000 from the unassigned fund balance to the county building maintenance fund. Motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions? Okay, everyone vote please.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Is everything yes, motion carries?
You know, I've noticed it's good when we all attend the county, the committee meetings because we get to discuss and we ask questions then and we know what we're voting on and it's been explained to us before we get here and it just helps us, helps us move faster. Okay, number six. Number seven. A resolution to appropriate $46,000 from the fund balance to the school's budget to cover a shortfall in the food service budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Stokes and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Any questions? Mr. Francis is here if anyone has any questions.
I think that's about all right.
Okay, well, we'll tell him that then. No discussion or questions, so everyone please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, seventeen yes.
Number eight is a resolution to appropriate funds from the unassigned fund balance to the Benton County Lottery's budget for utilities. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Hicks. Any questions about the utilities at the lottery? We have none, so everyone please vote.
That amount, I don't know what it shows on the resolution. That amount, the, uh, the mayor took over sponsorship of this resolution and the amount was actually lowered to $12,000 to $14,000. And it was approved or recommended by budget.
That, that was recommended by budget and, uh, we'll, we'll need, you can make a motion to amend or I can just say since I took over the sponsorship that I amended to 12,000.
Yes, since you, since you took over the sponsorship, you made the change. Therefore, we approved it as 12,000.
I just did the figure of what we'd used and adjusted it to, there's no reason to put extra in there. If it does run over, we'll fix it in June. But I think 12,000 will be fine.
And this was done in committees if you weren't there. Yeah.
Mr. Price? Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, seventeen yes.
Number nine. Resolution nine is a resolution to approve an updated health and safety plan for Benton County government. Need a motion and a second to bring it to the floor. We have one by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Stokes. Uh, I think Commissioner King wants to make, give you some information.
You want to amend it?
I do want to amend it, yes.
You second to amend it?
Okay, a motion to amend is by Commissioner King. Who will second it? Commissioner Hicks.
The amendment will read, everywhere it says health and safety plan, add version B 1.4, January 23. This version, I sent it out on email after we got the 22 version, okay? The only change is, is I took out appendix G and the verbiage under the appendix of what it is. And then I added every appendix with appendix letter to the page number. So if it's appendix A and B, A1, A2, same one. That's all of the changes.
What was the version number?
1.4, January 23.
Do you have that written down for the, um, clerk, so she can have that?
This would make it a lot easier in line.
Does anyone have any questions about his amendment? Okay, if none, we're voting on the amendment.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries, seventeen yes.
And now we are voting on the health and safety plan as it has been amended.
May I say something?
Yes, you may.
I want to thank Terry Keen and Jerry Price. They, they've helped on this. We're supposed to have had this in June or July of last year. And I get an email, I get a nasty email from the state every few days. Where's your health and safety plan? Who, who's your person over that? So I want to thank them. They went through the health and safety plan that was brought before the commission twice and withdrawn or, or not passed. Uh, they've worked on it, got it where the verbiage is right. And I think it's a document we can be proud of. And I also want to thank, but Carter, uh, he's agreed to be our health and safety person until we can find someone, so, and I appreciate him. He's alre, already been doing it at the highway department, so he understands it all. He's helping us out, but we'll be, we'll be appointing somebody different to that soon. But, uh, he's, he, he's doing it so we can get it passed and pacify the state on this. But thank you guys.
Okay. Everyone vote please for the plan as it was amended.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, seventeen yes.
Madam clerk, do we have any notaries? Okay, they failed to bring the list for the notaries. So what we're going to do is we're going to move on to number 17 and let them go and get their list and bring it back. And while they're getting it, we're going to go on to number 17. Any other business? I know we have other business tonight, Commissioner Stokes?
Madam clerk, I've approved that we suspend the rules to allow for consideration of resolution number 10 and for the Benton County road list approval.
You got the approval of the Benton County updated road list? Does everyone understand that?
Motion second for suspension of the rules?
Okay. Now we need to vote to... Commissioner Nunry? Okay, now, vote if you would like to suspend the rules tonight.
Anyone wish to change your run? Seventeen yes.
Okay, so now that they are suspended, we're going to take up resolution 10. It's a resolution to appropriate funds from the unassigned fund balance to the county buildings other equipment line item to pay for the AEDs for the courthouse.
You may explain.
Let me get a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Stokes and Douglas. So now the mayor would like to explain that.
This money was appropriated in last year's budget. Uh, Dr. Shannon ordered these. They just came in this past week. So we're in a different budget. The money at the end of the fiscal year reverted back to the general fund. So we just need to put it from the general fund back into the line item that it was in so we can pay the bill.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, if none, please vote to approve number 10.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries, seventeen yes.
The next, um, order of business is to approve the county road list. It's an updated list that he, uh, submits to the county commission in January of every year. If, I don't know if anybody copied it off from your email. It's kind of lengthy, but if you want a copy, you can get one from Charlie. He said he'd be glad to print you one.
He has a couple of, do you have two or three copies?
So he's got three, if anybody wants. Okay, so any questions about that? If none, everyone vote please. The wine? I was too.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Seventeen yes, motion carries.
Who made that motion? Stokes and Douglas? Do we have any other business? Now we're back to the appointing of the notaries. Devin Latimer, Janelle Cook, Julie Thornton, Michelle Sullivan, and Cheryl Evenden, Evenden. Whichever way you say that, for sure. I have a motion and a second by Commissioner Hicks and by Commissioner Stokes to appoint the notaries. Any questions? All in favor of the notaries? Vote aye? Yes?
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Okay. Anybody got anything you want to say? I have a couple and a few announcements. Um, I just want to remind you that you have to file your statement of interest disclosure by January 3rd. If you, you can go online and file it. If not, you can do a paper print-off, but it has to be turned in by January 31st. It's, you know, any candidate that ran for office this year has to file one. I'm sure Mr. Ward can tell you a little bit about it. But I think we've all filed them before.
Yes, January 31st, everybody.
You can go online and do this, real easy. Yeah, you do, if you don't file it on time, you might get a penalty. Well, it is public record, you know, you can go, you can go online and look to see who filed.
You'll get a $10,000 penalty if you don't. You won't be able to run for office again until the penalty's paid. So I, I would urge you to go ahead and do it.
I've got to apologize to everybody. The first resolution, I mentioned Dwayne Fowler in my truck. And I was looking at the first resolution in December instead of January, so. So let's have, I got mixed up. Just a question, Chair, you know, you have the floor. Um, the letter that you wrote, it was sent to the mayor through the election. Have to be a response to that.
I haven't received a response unless the mayor's office has received anything.
No response.
And we know they, it was delivered because we got the return receipt. It's on file in the mayor's office also. Okay, the next announcement is, last week, the, on Monday, the law enforcement committee recessed their meeting. So they will resume that meeting tomorrow night, 5:00 here at the courthouse. And the other thing was the same thing for next month. Our regular meeting night falls on President's Day, so we won't be meeting on Monday. We'll be meeting on Tuesday night. And one other thing is, I'd like to say thank you to Scott Hill because if you notice now on our tablets, we have the options of pass where we didn't have before. We either had yes, no, or abstain, and sometimes it caused a problem. You haven't got it on yours? It's only on mine? So I'm... Okay, um, how come it's not like that on the other side? Okay, um, how come it's not like that on everybody?
I've been getting more passes.
Okay, well, I'll take all that back then, Scott. No, thank you anyway. Okay.
I'm just going to know if there's any updates, things that are selling, or you can close them out, or...
Hopefully. You know how everything works during the winter and Christmas and all that, uh, everything's still moving the way we thought it was going to, um, no problems that I know of, so hopefully we'll be closing out on those sometime in February on, on the ones we're selling.
Anyone else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Keen and second by Commissioner Miller. Everyone vote to adjourn. Voice vote, I'll say aye. Anyone opposed? The meeting is adjourned.